Well, we will call this meeting to order. Seven oh one. I'll go ahead and just read the planning commission land acknowledgement. We'd like to acknowledge that we are on a traditional land of rich and diverse group of native peoples who have called this area home for more than 10,000 years. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the descendants of these native peoples who are still here today. Okay, did everybody get a chance to look through the agenda? Yes, all the heads not online, great, okay. Does anyone want to move to approve that? I'm moving to approve our agenda. My second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and did everybody get to read through the meeting minutes?
I did.
Yeah, were there any changes that is?
I wanted to request a change. I went back and watched the recording and since I actually didn't say something, I'd love it stripped from there. It changes the meaning of the minutes to strike it.
Sure.
And that is mine. Sorry, I had to mark up one of them. Oh, sorry, oh, here we go. It was my seventeen and eighteen. I'd like to strike the city's chair Lars and apologize for potentially using the word insignificant and it was never clarified that I did it. I think it's easier to just straighten it out, okay?
What page was that on, sir?
That's page three.
Okay, line seventeen?
Seventeen.
Okay.
Any other edits to the minutes?
If you could place my name in this, so we could.
Yeah, I just, Matt, yes, thank you.
Anything else? Um, does anyone want to approve the meeting minutes with the two comments of Addie David and also the lines for that?
Motion to approve the minutes as commanded.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, meeting date, our next meeting is just next week on March 12th. Any issues with that, is everyone able to join?
It's my birthday, so I would prefer not to come.
That's my birthday too.
I would come and have a birthday with you, but my husband's made friends, so.
I'm gonna call my husband and see why.
But I would be sure if you send out any comments before.
Perfect, okay. Awesome. Um, everyone else online, are you, Melissa, Sam, Lois, are you guys able to participate? Okay, great. Uh, Lois, are you, are you available? Oh, oh, she can't, okay. I can read lifts though, I saw, I can't participate, my thumbs down.
She's, maybe she doesn't.
Uh, you, you know you're muted? Okay. She can't unmute, okay, cool.
I'll be here next weekend, I'll be here next meeting, yes, thank you.
Oh, you will, okay.
Oh, good, okay, just, sorry, I have to flip through here. Good.
There you are. Awesome, okay. Uh, great, so everyone can join and also Johnny said that he will be in attendance as well, so we should have a full house, um, with the exception of the birthday girl. Um, awesome, uh, public comments. So I know we have two folks in the room and is there anybody online as well?
There is a couple of people online.
Okay.
I haven't seen them raise their hand, but.
Okay, great.
Hi, my name's Sarah Phillips, I'm the Chair of the Climate Action Committee and I just wanted to make sure that you knew that this was a draft document and you should write draft on top of it. We are not done with it, it's not really ready for the time limit. What we're doing is we're taking, uh, we're working with a consultant to smooth, we wrote it on Google Docs, so ten voices. Creating a document and we've decided that what we wanted to do was hire somebody to look through that and smooth it out for us. And also to do, uh, justice review, equity review, so we felt that we didn't really have the capacity to do that and they're taking that on the sort of. That should be done by the end of, uh, March and then we'll have something that we'll write to take the drafts.
He said end of March?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you. What's your name? You're observing, perfect, okay, great, anyone online wish to say anything? Okay. Um, probably won't be doing the city council liaison report, I assume. Hit that. And we'll move on to old business. So I know everyone have received the eighty, eighty-page material. I know we'll talk through, but before we kind of go there, was hoping to just take pause for a moment and, um, kind of reestablish where we're at as a commission from the sense that it was a little over a year ago. Part of this commission, we had a brainstorming and we talked about what are some of the big initiatives, what are some of the things that are really important to us as a commission? And so we can think about that as we go into the lens with the comp plan. And that was over a year ago and so we've had now a handful of different commissioners and so want to just level set and ensure that we're all on that same playing field. What are the major objectives, understanding that we're already kind of working through the comp plan, but to make sure that we have just a cohesive voice amongst this group here. Um, I talked with Vice President Yanni about that and Vice Chair, not President, and, uh, he promoted myself to President apparently. Um, and he had a couple ideas, so, um, I kind of want to put that out there for this meeting and not that everybody has to have an answer at this point, but maybe on March 12th if we want to circle back, if there's any additional thoughts. I know he had a couple of things that he was thinking about. But just want to put that out there, if there's anybody else that has anything that you want to bring to the forefront, I know five twenty-two is a big issue and we're gonna probably be tackling that with, um, the transportation section of course, but you know, if there's other ways, we want to incorporate that through the comp plan. Um, if there's any other ideas out there, just throwing that out there for someone to make comment, um, for us to digest and just again, make sure that we're all together on the same path now that we have new dynamics on, uh, the board with, uh, Sam, Shuri and Nani. If not, then that's great, we can just keep moving on. Everyone online, you guys good, thumbs up? Perfect, that was easy. Okay, so comprehensive plan update, the transportation element. To the transportation, so, um, Mark, do you want to take it over?
We have, uh, two memos from, uh, SJC Christina. Uh, and Fair and Pierce is beginning to do their work. So there's a list of policy considerations or suggestions in there. Um, that they have put forward before they do the strikeout underline of the actual elements, which is coming. Yeah, and so tonight being preparation for next Tuesday is an opportunity to discuss those, um, form questions that we could ask between now and next Tuesday. Uh, but then really prepare for Christina's presentation and get going on transportation. So it's not presumed that next Tuesday or soon thereafter, we would be drafting, striking out, underlining the suggestions, but we need to inform Fair and Pierce and SCJ so that they can complete that work. They're well underway, um, they had a few questions of staff that we clarified just this last week. Uh, and the materials for tonight are, uh, before you early so that you can generate that conversation and then, uh, hopefully stay on point because we're also talking about climate. Two very big issues with a short timeline and housing coming very shortly. It's a lot, uh, but tonight is not structured more than just what's in those memos or for information that you may need or any follow-up staff needs to do. Uh, and so I don't have anything beyond that, no presentations or anything.
Is the, is, is the next step of the process that, that's many times new sections would have, I'd like a markup copy of our current comp plan at our March 12th meeting, much like we had for land use.
I don't think it'll exist by then.
I see.
Yeah, the, the, uh, before I reviewed the memos, the check-in was, we, we need to at least achieve an introduction and begin. When the strikeout underline exists is not certain yet. And so I doubt that we're gonna get any new materials between now and Tuesday. Uh, but the, the discussion Tuesday and I could lead directly to that. And then a future opportunity to, um, not just move on from transportation, but to do that.
So is our goal tonight to sort of sit with the current language and the materials that they provided and look for. I didn't have to finish this actually.
I mean, I, I was wondering too about the red line. I mean, I think so in the, in the packet or at least, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that twelve and thirteen is fourteen pages and fifteen is maybe where we can lead our discussion or they have the suggestions. There's fifteen areas that they identified that were lacking and, um, uh, I, if, if everyone's good with that, maybe we just kind of jump in and start there. If you have questions, I think first from me, um, and if there's anyone else in the room without, uh, number one, it says that, that SR five twenty-two is a T-three corridor, but it was classified as a T-two corridor in 2015. I'm wondering if there's any insight as to the change in that or why or what the difference is.
That, that's gonna need some follow-up, the, the, the document they're referring to, it was updated in 2021. We have that. Uh, and it's a hundred and some pages, a lot of appendices, a lot of issues and not much narrative, but it's clear changes were made. Uh, what's not clear is why. So if it indeed was, uh, uh, T-two before and now a T-three, we need to confirm that. In the charts and tables, it's, it appears that's the case. But when you look at the one map, that's, I like maps, when you look at the one map, the, um, Bajo Way is still, uh, uh, according to the legend indicating. So in clarifying that with Fair and Pierce and then thanks to Lois asking that question about why the change, uh, that should enable a discussion about why it matters. Um, yeah, and the reason I say that is it may be a good thing. It's inverse, so a T-three, if you're trying to preserve community character and not become a major interstate, maybe a really good thing. Uh, it's less tonnage, it's, it's not intended to be a one or two, like SR eighteen and the changes that you're seeing out there and so forth. So, uh, from going from a two to three should not indicate that it's more impact.
Less impact.
If that's what the tonnage would indicate. So movement in that direction may be favorable and may be consistent with a lot of policies already on the plan and, uh, even though we need to stay consistent with Vision 2050. So they, they've outlined that, we need to do some verification in order to answer the question of what are the ramifications of it? Funding, uh, either way, it's, it's around freight and tonnage and the amount of trucks that are moving through the city.
That was, uh, my question with, uh, in several places, well, I guess it's the same place because she's just summarized it in this presentation. But this focus on freight because freight is not referred to in our existing comp plan. And so I was curious, I couldn't tell by what was written here, if Fair and Pierce was saying you need to allow or accommodate more freight and then this was like maybe a downgrade, so I wasn't really clear on, on if they were saying. I wasn't really clear what they were saying when they were talking about the need to include freight needs in the prioritization criteria, I don't know.
Well, the, the, the main difference between this and, uh, Lois, you're muted, I'm not sure. Anyway, the main difference between the last periodic updating and this one is that Vision 2040 is now Vision 2070.
Right.
As the regional transportation plan, uh, dealing with the, the two major ports and how things move through the region, you know, that, and between countries and so forth. PSRC is the regional body certifies the transportation-related portions of our comprehensive plan. It needs to be consistent with Vision 2050, which has those elements for the region increase. Uh, freight movement is a higher priority to some extent. It may not be for Lake Forest Park, but for some other jurisdictions. So when PSRC reviews, the updated comprehensive plan focuses on certification in order for eligibility for transportation-related funding and so forth. They're gonna look for those policies, so it may not be inconsistent, Catholics bring support policies in there. Uh, but they should be at a Lake Forest Park local line. Not for instance, Ken, you know, every, every jurisdiction has a different context. So I think by Fair and Pierce calling them out, they're citing that it is a PSRC requirement that they're gonna look for those policies. And it's up to the planning commission and the Canadian City Council to come up with how they apply to Lake Forest Park. And, and that's where the confirmation of T-two to T-three comes in.
Yeah, I, I was curious about that because of all of the work that Forrest done on five twenty-two and one of their talking points has been the amount of earth that will remove as a, you know, part of their request of some transit was to revisit the plans and do.
Well, it's ninety-five thousand tons.
Ninety-five thousand tons, and that was one of the rationale for asking for, uh, cutouts, it's not called cutouts, what's it called? Q-bypasses. Um, and so I was just doing a little bit of math and on the T-two designation, that's anywhere from, um, if that's an annual load for the road, the three hundred thousand to four million, that's, my calculations were anywhere from five bulk concrete trucks to like sixty-four concrete trucks a year. And I say that just because there's a lot of concrete trucks that go through our neighborhood, depending on where you live. There are a lot of concrete that's like, like Forest Park, so I was imagining that if it has a T-two designation, how does that match up with us being passed through for a lot of development and Shoreline and STs were, you know, like, even if we wanted to, could we allow for that type of freightage when the road isn't designated maybe for that volume of freightage?
I, I don't, I wouldn't say that you need to. We need to be found consistent with the regional transportation plan, which supports freight following for the region and the economy. But it doesn't mean you need to accommodate it here. That there may be policies that you could put in there consistent with community character. Uh, you know, the Bajo Way is the corridor. Uh, and I don't see that there is a greater need for elsewhere in the city. We don't have that kind of commerce. Uh, but by Fair and Pierce bringing it up, I don't think what they're saying is the community needs to come there. They're, they're addressing that Puget Sound Regional Council level update to be consistent with Vision 2050. So, and I don't have any policies tonight to suggest, but they may be, for instance, supportive of the regional freight system. Not so specific that it involves physical change here, you know. Something to, something that fits this community achieves the policy directive required by Vision 2050 and then moves forward so we can be certified. I also don't think personally, there's much danger of us worrying about the availability of grant funds for transportation funding. PSRC, PSRC is the, forgive my words, I know who I'm talking about, is the funnel for those uh, funding sources and then they do it out through their processes and you want to be eligible for that. But this community is not the same level as for instance, the county I came from, so Qualeme, that was highly concerned with a type one SR eighteen I ninety, and the east-west movement and bypass through the city. It's a much bigger issue there, but they were able to move through that, retain community character and fix some traffic issues there, existing interchange and get funding. And so this situation with a tier three, I think the opportunity is to be consistent for the same time maximize the community safety, the character, not become a truck passenger.
Yeah, okay, thank you for that.
So you guys are going to do a little more digging to find out the difference between the, okay, and is that something that will come next week or two?
Oh, yes, yes, that's just a conversation with, uh, a man, what's your name, Carmen? Uh, Fair and Pierce. This is confirmation because, you know, when you, when you read the, uh, the report, you read it really quickly, see the conclusions, but then you see a graphic that's very explanatory and then you look at the legend and between Bajo and Highway five is still indicated as a type two. But some things inconsistent, it may not be an error, but we need to further look into that. But I, I, there's no reason not to trust the statement that it is a T-three.
And so I just had a question, other than that factual clarification, do I understand the memo correctly uh, that we're considering tonight to mean that those green bullet points are the policies that they're suggesting we consider for inclusion in the comp plan update? So basically just include freight, a policy saying we include freight needs in the prioritization criteria for street projects? And we assess and seek to minimize conflicts between the active transportation modes and freight mobility when developing transportation improvement projects on designated truck routes?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the interpretation, everyone else is in agreement with that. Any other thoughts on one? Moving on, um, did any, anything else stick out on that first page with two, three or four? Four or five, we're actually saying, um, the next page on page fourteen. Uh, item six, uh, Lois, you had one comment about maybe striking the, the language, it says, uh, city facilities open to public such as parks and recreation centers. Do you maybe want to elaborate on that?
Can you hear me okay or?
We can, yeah.
Oh, okay, uh, no, again, I just thought it would be nice to include town center to make it just a little more personalized, but, um, the only, uh, yeah, I think most of my comments I submitted on in writing, um, but I, I think in general, I think the, the, the consultants flushed out very nicely the, uh, the equity issue out of, I, that was missing from the transportation, I noticed, but that was nice that they had flushed that out. Um, yeah, just, that was just a minor thing, just to again, uh, make it a little more personal.
So are we striking that out and adding something else?
Um, I guess the suggestion is just to, we could add in town center in addition to what they currently have, that's Nani, yeah.
I don't think there's any chance we'll be putting in anything that parks or recreation centers though. So you could strike it.
Okay.
And, and doing this at all is a matter of financing.
Okay, got it, so we can, we can take out publics.
Take out parks and recreation.
Cool, and add in town center instead.
Just real estate, like. Do you agree, Mark?
Well, I, I entirely agree, but I also like grants.
Well, I think we're trying to get grants.
Yeah.
And for town center.
Yeah, which are hard to get, but, um, the, the wording should also be able to be used for those opportunities where the city budget is not the sole consideration.
Yes, that is, the reality is we'll, we're trying to partner with other cities together, combine cities grants, uh, for chargers, uh, so yes, it's, it wouldn't be. I think all of these, assume we could get grant funds because most of these activities are not fixed, we can otherwise support. Many of them are.
I would offer by not having a policy so specific, it's presumed we would support that. A lot of times you want the policy and the comprehensive plan to support your requests. And they require you to cite those in very formal, in this case with the climate action plan and all the policies in it, it could be easily presumed, presumed that the community policy supports that kind of request.
So you're saying broader, okay, keep it broader.
Yeah, keep it broader.
Yeah, in this guy. Because of the direction that everyone seems to be going with.
Should we keep it broader by just putting a period at the end of public since town center is can be conflated with public plan versus private land? And the majority of town center is a privately held area.
We, we could flag it. Um, to add on to your comment, this isn't intended to be the final policy wording, unless it's worked perfectly, they go with it. Um, but they also have a library of such, uh, drafts, paragraphs and sentences. And so if we, if we just kind of round out the discussion about what you're trying to achieve, then that tasks them with coming up with.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Don't strike anything, just flag it for now.
Yeah, that, that was discussed and, and then the language, if the, if the body of the policy works for you, we could work some at the, the, the individual locations and the type varies. So who's capturing our suggestions that will be sent over to, uh, so primarily by video, verbally on the screen, my notes, uh, and anything that we gather. Right, and then on the twelfth is really the task of, of making it happen as a group over city. Tonight, you're collecting all the information, all the suggestions that we can. Well, I wouldn't say all, to the extent I can.
Yeah.
So the major ones, but I, I know at some point my, my pen won't capture them all.
That's good.
So it's really all our, I, I could use all the help I, I can get if we forget one or that issue comes up again, uh, don't worry about injecting, uh, words and phrases. I'll try and convey the flavor at least and the priorities with Christina so that we have a really good discussion.
Uh, Lois? Can't hear you.
Yeah, me, oh, there you go.
Sorry, it's the, the bar for raising her hand, I couldn't get it down. Um, I, I did want to include, uh, you know, public use at city facilities and gathering places such as parks and town center, so it did include both. Recognizing that, uh, town center is a gathering space as well, it's not a public space, uh, public land. But anyways, yeah, I agreed, sorry, we've, we've moved on, yeah.
Great, so have that flagged for next week? Uh, seven? High-capacity station areas, seven and eight kind of go together. Uh, the suggestion is to improve access to the town center, a transit hub, land high-capacity transit station. Uh, also calls out safe streets, town center connection and safe highways plan.
I think this is a, a place where it's hard, it's hard to like, for me to think about what it currently says and then it's just a new policy, T-dash, three-dash, whatever. But I, I would say this particular topic, um, does offer an opportunity for us to think about that equity piece that we've been talking about, um, just because I, I'm aware that, um, for many neighborhoods in our community, there aren't really great connections to transit, particularly for the area kind of north of one oh four and certainly up by the park, you know, so I, I think that there's something that we just need to be cautious about that we're not only thinking about the neighborhoods adjacent to bike twenty-two, but also the communities that are further away.
Yeah, we did lose our pickup bus on Barasa.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you, you know, so, so we've always wanted to have better connectivity there and also in the northwest projects. We don't have any real service, so.
Recyclables, really good point, yeah. That's a good, good call. Um, calling out one comment, Lois had, uh, get us to think about for seven and eight, it was to ensure bike and buffer pedestrian connection between the. The waterfront park to town center. By SR five twenty-two. I guess that kind of could fall in line to with, uh. You know, not just vehicles, but bikes and foot, so equity along that way. Work with outside agencies to mitigate negative effects of SR five twenty-two on non-motorized options for residents. Did you have anything else you wanted to add to that, Lois?
No, no, that's it.
Okay. So I think, uh, for next week too, maybe we want to look like seven and eight to think about. Um, and suggest the theme of equity and connectivity and think about. Other multi-mode of, you know, walking bikes and cars. Uh, number nine. Racial and social equity is a core objective when planning and implementing transportation improvements. The suggestion is to prioritize inclusive outreach. In the transportation planning process and create equitable corridors that provides safe and inviting travel for all people. Uh, ten, reduce storm water pollution from transportation facilities to improve fish passage. Uh, assess and implement feasible action items related to transportation network identified in Storm Water Management Act.
That's a question that particularly a council member, uh, Bodie. I think that this, you know, touches on our, our. Critical areas and policies that we have in place, but I seem to recall that as the community was. Building a case to change how five twenty-two was developed. That there was something about like that there was not going to be an impact to our streams and all that. With the, uh, plan to expand by twenty-two.
Was that a sound transit official position?
Right.
But they are discharging to our, our systems and to the streets.
Correct, and so, so I, I, when I saw this, I was thinking, how do we? How do we look at what's working or not about our existing regs or policies? But it looks like there's a loophole. If a, if an entity can come through and say they're going to do this huge project and it's not.
So a, a good, a good bit of, well, there's good news of that. The good news is that we actually are doing an updated storm water management plan right now, there's like. A million new requirements and, um, we're, it's, it's. You know, basically we've got a grant luckily to do that planning, so we're going to be updating. Um, uh, the plans and all the, um, monitoring and. Cleanouts and so forth, uh, and so our public works department is doing that, so that's the good news. But if you're a private entity or business who has water system, you're going to have to be monitored, so there's going to be more. Careful monitoring, the problem, uh, overall though, is that our overall system does end up discharging or. We do have, I'm not saying just the city system, there, there is still a lot of discharge to streams. And of course, anytime the stream is near the road, there's a discharge to it. I don't think the issue is our regulations so much as, you know, um, sound transit concluding will have. So, uh, you know, and, and also, um. The rules are very complicated, so for example, Washdaw has storm water facilities, but by stage while we're required to maintain. At our expense, uh, so there. I think this, this is a topic that is, would be. It's very timely because of the tire, uh, pollution and impact and because we do have. Uh, discharge to our streams, but, uh, we don't know exactly what a good solution would be, so I would encourage this to be. Broad language that talks about. Uh, you know, basically protecting our streams from, uh, from road. Related impacts and then that gives us. Um, the opportunity to explore that, see if we could get some grants and improve things, it does distress me that there's discharge to streams. So. I, I probably presumed two years ago that, that or so that there was. You know, that we have better systems. If that's helpful.
I would say given your expertise, it's very helpful.
I wish I knew more. So we'll kind of flag that one as a high point and, and have maybe some which that talks about protecting streams.
Yeah, some encouragement as opposed to. So that we can seek out grants and see what we could do.
Uh, and just as a new person. Then the second part gets very specific. Enhance street sweeping in the Lang Creek Basin. So no, no issue with it, it's just, I'm, I'm wondering when we word submit that. If we're gonna, um, maybe two policies or three policies. Instead of one that is both broad and specific. So the way I read it is.
Question is, do we intend to, when we talk to public works about streets sweeping? Is that something they do or don't do?
I'd also like to know if your peers why they call that out in particular.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Okay. I, I'd read it as an example, but if it's an example. Couldn't there be broader examples?
That would be just all us.
In this policy document, is there, is this a place where you would put, um, recommendations or? Helping establish some baselines, so prior to any construction on five twenty-two, prior to the light rail opening at one eighty-fifth. You know, and having increased traffic patterns, whether they're buses or, you know, whatever it is, do we? Can any of these grants or policies help support? An establishment of baselines, so as new broad regional transportation services come online. Or as traffic patterns increase, we can, we can make a case for a grant that says. You know, runoff from tires will have increased by a hundred and twenty percent over the last two years because of. Traffic patterns or whatever, like it feels like that would be important to make a successful case. For mitigation, uh, funds.
And I'm not sure what the current storm water plan process includes for this kind of potential pollution, I, I do remember that. When they started tolling, um, five twenty. There was documentation, for example, the traffic on, on Bapa Way increased by thirty or thirty-five percent. To, by people trying to avoid the toll, so there's, I, I think, uh. I like the concept because otherwise you don't know, you're just anecdotal about your impact.
But do we put, do we put that in at a policy level or is that more incidental and a bit shy of?
Isn't even the question that we don't know if we have a baseline?
I'm guessing we don't. I've asked a lot, I've, I've hoped to look for it and my awareness or my understanding is there isn't. So I just wondered if that would be another policy consideration of just, you know, a, a T whatever that, not whatever. Um, that we value, you know, in a time of great change in our community that we. Have a policy that we keep track of baselines and change over time so that we can respond appropriately.
I really like that.
Well, and it fits into resilience, right, because it was. Resilience, we have to be adaptable, we have to be aware of what's going to be changing as we go along, but this is a good example of. What is that, we have to identify the baseline so that we.
Right. Evidence.
Exactly, exactly.
Don't operate on feelings. Never. That sounds good, I like that.
It might fit nicely into the recommendation on number twelve. About demand forecasting, also gathering the data historically.
Good point, that's a good idea. So for number twelve, we'll kind of put in a flag to talk about establishing a baseline. Uh, not to skip over eleven, Sam, have any thoughts about that one? Uh, they list out five bullets for vehicle, pedestrian, bicycle, that's it. This wants to develop a comprehensive program that addresses a level of service standards for all varying types of transportation, so again, vehicle, pedestrian, bikes. I, I guess our current plan doesn't really, isn't very specific, and so. To me, I'm interpreting they're saying their recommendation as to get specific and call out the different modes of transportation.
I think it's funding issues, isn't it? More than a policy issue.
I think what they're calling out is. Um, the, the new state requirements and division twenty fifty requirements for both. As opposed to just level of service for. I'll give it some hours. Which is highly represented. Uh, but the other ones aren't.
Yeah, T dash one dash one. That, T dash one dot sixteen. Calls this out, and so it's, it's really. Maybe providing more specificity on that, but then also. Not to, you know, I mean to honor the work that was done in twenty fifteen, it seems like some of the progress on, you know, these, uh. Standards of service like for pedestrians, it's been more of a lack of funding, it's been all like a vision. I. Take away, right?
Uh, it could be project review, not that there is a lot of budget review. For redevelopment or. Greenfields or anything. But the level of service as you measure project impact and cumulative impact and regional impact would be very important. And to bring multimodal bikes, pedestrians to the same level. Or at least require measurement so that we can assess impact. I don't know if assess was early. Evaluating.
Probably won't have money to do that, so. Though, um, but I do think, um, just for your, for your recognition. That one of the topics the council's going to talk about is we really do need to refresh. And update with public engagement, at least safe streets, uh, I don't know about safe highways. At least safe streets and, um, also the parks. Both of those, I think we're going to. Require updates, we don't really have a citizens committee and, who, first, the home of safe streets, so. We're having a council retreat on the twenty-third, so that's part of my council member update. And, uh, I'm sure the fiscal, the fiscal constraints that we're under and, and facing. As well as, um, updates, some of these plans will be topics for discussion. Maybe the planning commission oversee the update for safe streets.
I don't think that made the work plan for twenty twenty-four.
That's true, we voted last week, so.
It's a tough one, we don't have an obvious home for it, so.
Alrighty, um.
That one felt lukewarm before we move on.
Oh.
Supported, uh, I don't have a. Exclamation point next to it. Or we're going to talk.
I mean, I don't, I don't have any concerns with them, I assume that they're putting that out there because it's more of a requirement, right?
Yeah, I think I'm using punctuation to tell the story. And so with this one, I'll find the punctuation that says meet the mandated minimum. Do what's required, have it in there, get certified, but. It doesn't across the board get an exclamation point. For a variety of reasons. And there are policies that speak to it already, so sort of they changed it correctly.
Twelve, uh, Sam, we have your comment, that's good, great, um. Yeah, the comments for twelve about. Demand forecasts. Thirteen, we're talking about financing, so this is to include a twenty-year financing plan as well as analysis of funding capability for all transportation modes. Uh, fourteen is reassess the strategy to address the events of funding shortfall. There's no green comments with that, I think they're just saying those are gaps in our current plan, so we'll have to, they will have to provide some language around that.
I would just add, but they're not gaps in practice because we do have, um. Part of a sales tax that goes directly to streets and also we have a transportation improvement district. Trying to remember the actual sources, we had two points anyway. Of, of revenue that is earmarked for transportation, uh, that is authorized by the state, that's just part of the status quo. That's how we do our street overlay programs, for example. Uh, and maintain the streets, so I just want to shoot and be aware, this, this was below the radar for me. That we actually, we have stable and predictable funding, it's just not enough for what communities are. So we have an, and we have an asset management kind of schedule and so forth, but again, it's not. Enough to get everything done in fifty years or something like that, so. Just to, so I think we're there, but not in terms of filling all the gaps, so.
Thank you. Fifteen, identify, uh, stable and predictable funding sources for maintaining and preserving existing transportation.
Talk about two, that's what I was referring to.
Those two.
Yeah.
So the, in addition, their comment here is review safe streets, they're throwing out all our policies. To make the twenty year, including identifying funding sources, so. So are they saying that? The information that you just shared with us, that's what we should verbalize and put in the document, or they're not sufficient enough to do that?
I don't, I don't know, I'm, I'm just saying we do have it, and if it's in the current plan, there's my, it might be covered because I'm not sure. That. We do have stable and predictable funding.
So just right, yes.
On that, that was one of the more recent. Uh, check-in questions, and I know very recently we got the. Um, the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan, versus this year to them. And then we had a question about timing, when that will be updated versus when the periodic updates do. Until we'll follow up with. Fair ears on, on language that achieves a periodic update.
Yeah, hopefully what we can do is fold. The requirements into our existing practices and update processes, so that's my hope.
Okay.
Um, we won't be filling all the gaps, that's all. So I, I don't know what language we already have in the concrete, I allow us, we may have some redundancies, I don't.
We could, we can expand on it, but I.
Yeah.
I'd offer every city has that issue, it seems very vague language.
Yes.
That has survived.
Okay. Great, well, those were the fifteen elements, I think we have. Market, you probably have a, a bunch of lists, but I have at least seven that we need to cast flag and maybe work out a little bit more next week. Um, but some of these were pretty straightforward. Are there any other thoughts on the transportation element? You wanna transition the climate now? Alright. So. I guess to just kind of help facilitate this discussion, um, certainly open to ideas, but, uh, we could work from. The, uh, memo that Christina put together on February twenty-ninth, it's page eighty-two in the packet. Actually, eighty, eighty-seven to have specific questions. Well, actually, let me take a step back because the climate action plan was. Very robust and, and get to call it out, um, Sarah had mentioned that this was a draft too, so there's still edits that are going to be made. Overarching comment is just equity to be woven through the document, which I think there was some comments. Internally about that, that it is missing some equity elements. Climate action is very well aware of that, and they're gonna, uh, they're working with someone to, uh, address those. Uh, so, so we're unable to work through the climate action draft?
Yeah, and I just wanted to bring out that Christina. Yeah, and I just wanted to bring out that Christina offered some slides too, which were less focused on climate action committees were a little more focused on some of the new requirements.
Okay.
I think it starts on one eleven, so just so that we can look at. I think what she did is break down the new requirements. Because the comp plan now requires this element, a climate element. I think what she did in these slides, if I understand it correctly, is break down or flag what some of the things are related to that requirement we consider. In addition to our own climate action committees. And I haven't had a chance to mentally, you know, get those to overlap.
Couldn't have been too many meetings ago. We kind of talked about it a little bit prior. Without having the detail, we have a little bit more detail, especially this week. I remember a question about what is that direction? And I think I characterize it for Sam as good and then better and then best. As far as timing goes. And so now we're putting those steps into action. Tomorrow night, Christina and I will be at the climate action committee. They're going to continue their work with the climate action plan at Cascadia and Cory. And bring that to council. And the effort to incorporate the climate action plan into the periodic update will continue. That that part was always in place. Then the commerce grant came about and we got the good news. Five hundred thousand, very specific about how it should be spent with a scope and budget. And we can move the twenty twenty nine requirement for a climate element forward because of the grant. Those deliverables are due by June twenty twenty five. So it's a funded effort on top of this for a while. But then by next June, to have another actionable amendment to the comprehensive plan to be considered by city council. That would be the climate element with the two sub elements. So the way the way I read the slides in the memo is let's continue work to incorporate the climate action plan into the existing elements, some of which are optional already there. Achieve that while we're working on the broader goal of achieving the standalone climate element. Four years or three years of because of the grant funding. So tomorrow night, climate action committee will be there, convey that so that they're aware of their path going forward. It's just preboard. There's the nice council special meeting introduction of the grant agreement with commerce. That's going to take March. We need some provisions in there. And a couple of scope changes for days. Once that contract is signed, we will then act on a request for qualifications for consult to do that scope of work. And then start immediately with that work. Which essentially is best described as the greenhouse gas sub element and the resilience sub element. So the way I envision it is both will be going down the road at the same time, but we have that December deadline and then the June twenty twenty five deadline, and that's our opportunity.
I can do the small, medium, large. With better bets, but in terms of amount for videos.
Quite a challenge, right? It's even tough to summarize, but that's that's kind of what the community is facing. And I've offered the alternative that if we don't utilize these grant resources, the obligation's still there and you have more time to fulfill it. But the city budget would be affected. The work would be revenue.
So for best use of this group's time here, do you guys want to work through the questions that were maybe in the memo? Or do you want to go through the PowerPoints? I don't have a strong desire either way.
I think the questions would get started.
In the memo. She will be asking us those directly. So we're gonna hop to page eighty eight. Thanks for explaining the path one and path two. I think that's pretty clear. Everyone's in understanding of what the goal is with the path one and path two. So the first question is, do you agree with the proposed element assignment for each of the goals and strategies from the climate action plan? The questions I was reading from, it's eighty eight.
I didn't, it was hard to see it kind of separated from for me for doing the work, but I mean, out of blush, they seem sensible. We might find as we work through them that practically it informs some language choices in other sections. But I would say on the on the whole, it seems well aligned. The third element that we had was that we wanted to say that we have a unique ecosystem in the natural environment. Third path would be, how do we make sure those are in the news? So how do we maintain, I mean, for us maintaining not the increasing forestation influences is a piece of that. So there are three pieces. It's the this. Reducing carbon emissions. Enhancing our natural environment. And the third is building resiliency. So I didn't see that second thing here, but I think she just did it in number, I think. It's on page eighty four under any goal. And then there are, she must get three strategies, is that? But take a look on eighty four to make sure that's what you're. You know, she didn't send this. So I'm assuming. Now, there's a lot there. Check on eighty four and see if halfway down where it says angle, is this what you're talking about, Sarah?
Increased carbon, yeah.
I don't know how to answer that.
Right, right, right.
I I know that the goals for us our goals are reduce carbon emissions. Enhance our 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 native, our natural environment, develop the resiliency. Those are the three things that we, those are, they go this way and then we have strategies with it, right?
I think I think what she's wording or responding to is the three primary goals of the climate action plan. And then six areas of action. And to whatever extent those contain policies, let's get them in the periodic update. And then this table on page eighty three poses to do that.
Yeah.
And then a good question for tomorrow night has the twelfth would be, does it do that?
That's how I felt too, just reading through this. It just looked like it was all there, but I don't know what to compare it to. You know, if there it were, if there was another comp plan like from Kenmore or something like that, what their wording is, you know, you can kind of have like a side by side comparison, but it looks good to me.
I think I think it's a it's a occurrence check rather than any assumption it's missing major components.
Is it appropriate to, I don't know, if all is there, is it appropriate to ask questions upstairs here or?
In my opinion, this is legislative as long as we're polite and respectfully, you could ask anything you want.
Okay.
There are no rules in that regard.
I think such a thing is also an extra meeting for our benefits.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, great. Had a couple of like areas. First one, I was wondering about. It is funny, actually, I think, Lois, you had called it out too. In one section, Sarah says enact code for requiring electrification. And I remember you mentioned that probably one of the first meetings that you had joined, and I just was wondering a little bit more about that. And in here, it says enact code to phase out fossil fuel infrastructure and new construction. I was wondering if you could elaborate on that a little bit more.
I don't get that.
Yeah.
That's elaboration. And how do you, how we have this to do in the long term. Tell me where you're.
Sure. Strategy one, use cleaner energy. It's B D one point four.
Each fifty four.
Oh, sorry, each fifty five. You don't know this document by heart.
And if you say neutral structure, it should be electrified, it should not be gas, right? So that's that's obvious. It's how you move people who have gas.
Yeah.
Or if we're using fossil fuels, how you move these.
Right.
Yeah.
We're good. And that's a piece of what we see as our role is to do outreach and we're calling it. It's not right, but we call it get ready to get ready. But the notion being that when your heat pump, your gas pump is flooding your basement, that's not a big time to figure out what the next how, you know, water check should be. So what do you need to get ready? And because gas, if the paper is correct, gas prices are being worked faster than electricity. So there's going to be a natural sense that, you know, there was a big thing where, you know, we were all going to cook with gas, right? And the best thing that ever happened to us. And we did, we put in seventy five percent in the homes and like force park of gas. Heaters, stones, or heat. So the question is, how do we help people make that transition? But the mandate is for new. So you would see a policy that would then downstream result in code that says any new construction in Lake Forest Park would prohibit the installation of natural gas and require or heat pumps or.
It it be. Yeah, it's a tall order.
You know, yeah, yeah. Yeah, but you know, we we think this is a here on fire issue, you know, we can decide not to do it and then down the road and wouldn't see. I think one of the things that's really challenging, I don't necessarily disagree, but one of the things I often feel at our meetings is that as a citizen who is not somebody who understands the downstream effects, I don't, I don't know what we can reasonably ask for, you know, or recommend, but then doesn't get to you when you're you know, council and then fall apart because it's not practical. When I presume between Mark and Nick, you can offer some guidance that are like you know, you can't run that down because you could never legislate that. But we are kind of feeling our way in the dark a little bit. I think on some of these things like, could we recommend a code that says new construction couldn't have natural gas? I I don't know. Did you, it's somehow it's a little bit easier with tools. So you bring to yourself those poor guys who are carrying a gas on their back and if their ears are being blown out and they're breathing nonchalant gas. So you want to talk about maybe implementing all elect. And and I understand why for his part is just purchase the whole battery packs. So then then, you know, there's a, there's a notion that you're protecting workers from air and and breath kinds of things that you're, it's quieter and it works as well. And so some of the pieces, I mean, there's some legislation we're proposing and some places where we're saying we should just take a leader. The city should lead by example. And once people see, we think once people see that it's better for everybody. But there are movements to
There are studies that had a mandated electric heating and cooling and the proppantative natural gas and maybe cooling and even stones. So it isn't, it is a cutting edge kind of regulation, but it is happening. And, you know, we're in a unique situation because most of our power comes from hydro power. But if you're in another jurisdiction and they get their electricity from natural gas, you know, is, are you just switching the the deck chairs around? So but we're, we happen to be lucky because of our hydro power base.
Anyway, it helps to know these things. I appreciate the work you've done on it. I just think that sounds that sounds like a here on fire moment and a and a super great response. And then like, what can we do, you know, can we? Where are opportunities?
So so speaking a bit more about that, right, so. What I appreciate about some of the languages that there's, there's assistance of urgency, right? You do need to make some choices now in order to impact the worst results down downstream. What's missing for me, and I don't know how to address this necessarily in language, but there's what's what's missing is kind of a language around a cultural shift, right? Because we're thinking, we're talking about a mind change, a mind change shift. And how we think about how we live our lives. Fundamentally, I mean, for me, we we have our gas power, everything in our house, gas power. To move that to to, you know, to think about the expense of that. When I have, we have our children up to college, you know, this, it's just like, how are we going to impact extreme white thinking around the urgency of climate, of addressing climate change, right, as a community? And I, I don't. It's one thing to say, hey, we need to do this and to set policy. It's a whole nother thing to say this is how we're going to, it's a whole nother thing to move a community towards that.
Well, that's why. I'm sorry. That's that's why the new construction verbiage is there because then that allows people that have gas to be grandfathered in. Because I I don't think that that's going to be possible to ask our community to switch from gas to electric. Right, but we, so one of the things that the committees is going to we think our, we're, we'll finish this report and then we're going to pivot. And we think our pivot is outreach. So for example, we did something on gas stoves where a heart surgeon from Everly hospital came in and just talked about the impact of asthma on children, houses with gas stoves. Well, so that if you're a parent and your kid has asthma, that's really motivating to say once people move their gas stoves out of their houses, their kids recover from asthma. And and adult allergies around it because of the quality of the indoor air. We're not saying you have to do it, but you're, you're a mother and your kid's gassing for air, you think. But we're not saying you have to, you know, but what are, and and we proposed, you know, we said what else can you do? Open the windows when you're cooking and make sure your hood is working and turn on your fan all the time. Those other things as well, but but a piece of it is sort of telling those stories because you have to, you're exactly right. You have to create a culture of change. But and where we struggle is the urgency of it. And we think that the city should hire some of the full time, who gets up and helps to work every day. And I know they don't have any money for it, but you know, they could, we say they could do whatever they want. So but there is, that's exactly the issue is somebody who's thinking about it all the time. And it's all, it's also these implementation of the comp plan and how, who is it that gets up every morning to come and move? As a full time issue. So we talked to them about hiring an intern, you know, in the short term, somebody who does that. But it's it's a, it's a hard issue. I I absolutely. And I I really want to say I would appreciate you putting in seriously sort of figuring out how we do this, how we break the policy, right? Encourage the community. The grant that we talked about for charging stations. It's easier and maybe more people will may decide to get a car. Another grant that we talked about for charging stations. It's easier and maybe more people will may decide to get a car.
I think at, at the policy level for this effort. It's a hard left. Every city, every community step. Everyone has wanted to take a certain amount of risk. Be a leader. Not take so much risk. So that, and, and there's sort of a minimum. Uh, the new set of, uh, international codes are going into effect March fifteenth. Whenever you just stand, stand on those issues, you could see it as they're becoming very burdensome. Or you could see it as movement in the direction towards. The Climate Action Planet policies, but it's only one step. And it's at the state level and those are mandated and it will come. Then you have bodies like K four C that have a goal or policy about a fifty percent reduction. Then you have a draft climate action plan that. Attention as a full of sixty percent. But I think the policy that we need to capture. In the climate action plan and comprehensive plan needs to kind of get out where this community wants to be. Put policies in place. And it is policy, the luxury is policies are a guide. Uh, but they lead to implementation. And when your code says no gas stoves, Calvin's going to be out there saying. You can't put that gas stove in. You're going to hear from that person.
Yeah.
It has impact. So, um, it's not a. Wish list by anything, but, um, I think the choice in this effort is how far this community is willing to go.
I do have to say that we have two gas stoves for our fireplaces. And when we have no electricity, that is our source of heat. That is our backup plan. So.
So, so just notice the resistance here.
You know, it's like we live.
And we know that.
Lake Forest Park where trees come down, fire or electric line comes down. We can be without power. We've been without power for like five, six days before. And we've huddled around our little gas fireplaces and we've slept in those rooms because they're warm. So I mean, it's like, you know, our, our, our budget doesn't allow us to go to a hotel for heat. So I mean, that's, I mean, that's where I'm immediately thinking of. It's like, I would. Would really resist getting rid of our gas stoves that we have.
And, and, and we're just talking about.
Yeah, we're just talking about it. Yeah, that's just gas. Yeah. So.
But the electric cars are now going to be, it'll have that same capacity to run your house. So in the long term. You can, will be able to run your, your house from your. When you're saying, but the question you're saying is how do I stay informed in the long term if you was saying no gas? There are alternatives that are coming. That's all I'm saying.
I think Sarah, I hear what, what you're saying is, is you're, you're working on this very closely and have been for a very long time, much like we're working on the conflict. And what I hear you saying is you've been tasked to think. As progressively as humanly possible about this, not. You haven't been trying to think of how to be a bridge builder. Right now you've been thinking about what do we need? If we could wave a magic wand, right? And, and, and what I hear you saying is, is one place that you hope our city will go. Initially is for all new construction and to influence people who are at the end of life on their. Fireplace or their stove or whatever to consider replacing so that it's a more graduated and subtle. And in that same timeframe. You're projecting that electric cars will become more ubiquitous, the technologies. So that it's not, you're not shaking a stick saying shame on people who have gas and who still use it. It's. It's more, we need to start making this transition. Some may argue we need to be doing it right away, but that's also doesn't match up with practical realities like.
Cost. If I'm understanding, the charge for the commission for this purpose is what you said, we have this. I'm just going to use magic wand document.
Yeah.
And us as a group, but the body, we need to understand or we need to establish, are we, yes, wanted to wave the magic wand or we want to skip back a little bit more.
Yes, staff's luxury is we look at it more technical. Our task is to get the climate action plan incorporated into the periodic update as best possible. The cleanest way for us is five, six simple words. In, incorporated by reference. And then the document stands on its own as a policy document. That's the simple way. The task is not that easy. The climate action plan will exist for its purpose and have its contents. But I think for the planning commission. Beyond just understanding what's in it and the trade offs, it's what portions do you want to incorporate into the periodic document? And that's where it gets difficult. And consultants will help with. A certain level of what's required and, and, you know, a bit of mandates, but then the commission. Has to make a recommendation of what the group thinks the community should be trained to the city council.
Is it a fair summary that what Christina's asking us on page? Uh, eighty-eight. It sounds like she's telling us that path one is the part we're working on. Path two is the part the climate action committee is working on. That they're. That they will actually produce the new required climate element as a supplementary document. And what she's asking us, if, if, if we look at page eighty-three through eighty-five. Which of these things do we want to work into existing sections? And, and are these things, the right hand column, and are these things? It sounds like that's the question that, yes, that we're not going. We are probably not going to work on the climate element of the conflict, right?
In some ways, it's, it's the opposite. The climate action plan. Exists and is going forward in some capacity. The planning commission needs to be aware of it and incorporate it into the. Existing chapters or elements.
Right.
And that's what's presented, how it could be done. And so that part of the commission's work is to capture that to the extent you want, bring it into the period of update by December. I know the council. Yeah, but that is not the climate standalone climate help.
Right. That'll be done by.
With the grant money, we will RFQ. A consultant will come on board. We will get an advisory committee forum and then begin that course of work. But it's defined by the scope of the grant. It fulfills the grant requirements for it. And, and so I would offer, we would rely heavily on the climate action committee. Um, but the process is a comprehensive plan amendment similar to the periodic update. Yeah. And, and the timeline is just a little longer. The, the, the technical aspect is difficult for us is. It's two different tracks. And so the first track by inserting all these policies into these various sections of the existing elements. While you're kind of driving the bus down the road, you're likely to then take them out of all those existing. But it's going to stand alone climate help to some degree. So it's. That would be an argument that don't do it now. Do your periodic, periodic update, capture the climate action plan, make it nice and clean, adopt it, spend four or five years. Figuring out where you want the comprehensive plan to be and where those move. And likely they, they should exist in a standalone time. They don't have to, but that's, you want clarity, you want, uh, you want it to be usable. So we're going to be. It could be seen as we're going to insert these into various elements, fulfill the requirement and immediately take them out and put them in another chapter. Uh, but those two processes involve the same groups. But that second one is planning, it is a comprehensive plan amendment through the docking process. You can voluntarily update comprehensive plan once a year, group everything together. That is a category that falls into the ability to adopt, adopt the next year.
So for the purposes of working through this, then maybe. Maybe it's more efficient for us. So we'll get page eighty-three, start there on that table and kind of talk through some of these sections and. Uh, since that's directly what they're thinking about going through. So at eighty-three, that first one is the goal or strategy, the first one being to reduce emissions. Uh, I feel like when I read through this, I saw a couple of different references. Uh, so this one in particular says by twenty thirty. You reduce by sixty percent and then net zero by twenty fifty. I think I saw a couple of different metrics throughout this document. Does anyone else kind of remember that? It was like get to eighty percent, they get to ninety percent, but this one is saying. Let's be net zero by twenty fifty. Yeah. They're saying to incorporate that in the vision of goals for goal one. And it looks like that can go onto a couple of different areas, land use, transportation, capital facilities and utilities.
That looked like. Land use. Insert number dot fourteen, uh, prioritize the reduction of emissions to. Support a net zero. The twenty fifty net zero goal. Is it, is it just, is that what we're talking about? Like we would insert a bullet in that section? Is that the?
That's a good question.
I think at this level, it, and twenty twenty-four, yes.
In twenty twenty-four, we're just looking for like a nod that we acknowledge that there is work beyond us. And so the language and the policy would be to prioritize efforts.
Yeah, you have your community vision and then your mission and then the goals and then the policies. So at this level for this year. Satisfy the legislation, you just need those general policy statements. You don't necessarily have to make the hard decisions about this note, about that note.
Right.
This card, not that card. Yeah.
That's, I mean, that, I, I would think that we could do that if we go down this list. It's just. I think in terms of prioritize. Emissions reduction and like, because prioritize doesn't necessarily, it gives us the. Capturing the idea without locking us into the specifics that are going to be worked out in the climate element.
The councils already has passed this, hasn't it? They, they've signed on to write K, K four C. Saying that.
Yeah. I was just trying to find a path forward based on what Mark said about like whether we put things in our existing chapters. And what that looks like. So it doesn't contradict then what actually comes out by the end of twenty twenty-five. I, 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 that's all I was doing is trying to figure out that path. So that we're not silent on the subject of the existing sections.
Well, it's simply, so. Get to where that would be, where, where, where are those gaps? They're, they're definitely offering them, uh, as an answer to this. We do this. Will it, will it achieve the man mandates under RCW? The assumption is the answer is yes. But it's, it's a local decision or local, um. Issue. And so that, that local character needs to come through the commission and council.
Are there any concerns with reducing emissions? Without language or the locations? Are there any suggestions in where else it could fit? Or is land use, transportation, capital facilities and utilities is out? Or with everyone? Seen a lot of head nods online? No exclamation.
But we, we're there, but it could be bad. But for me, they, they left it that way. When they stayed, you know, when they said where this goes will probably depend on which type. So they're not definite. So I'm not.
Noncommittal.
Noncommittal, yeah.
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 And it's just a start. I mean, literally tomorrow night, we're going to be at CAC. The grant is before the council. Um, the RFQ hasn't even been written yet. So this is an opportunity to.
I read this, I read this as giving them, like, if we all agree, then I feel like what we're saying to them is. Please feel free to put a statement in land use, a statement in transportation, a statement in capital facilities, a statement in utilities that is a nod to this. We. We don't know what it's going to look like. We don't want the climate all it's going to look like, but we can in those sections acknowledge that we. We want generally support reduction of emissions and we don't know how that's going to look, but here's our words that say we value it.
For now, yeah. And then April, when, when we're at that point, it'd be much greater specific for your consideration.
Okay. Enhance ecosystem health and carbon.
By the way, your last council meeting, Mark, thanks for that presentation. You didn't watch that. Um, they, they had. Yeah, DCG presented on the value of the, uh, the ecosystem services that trees provide and they. Think it's worth going back and listening to.
We're getting the report, maybe. Uh, Nick or Mark, you could send that a copy of the slides. Uh, the whole report's long, but. Could send out the slides and I'll make, uh, it uses a USDA model called iTree. And it actually looked at our whole tree canopy and then, um, came up with pretty massive carbon. Removal, uh, numbers, you know, the values are, are tree canopy. So. And also like a asset value. For the, for the trees. Yeah. There's huge numbers there. Pretty stunning. Yeah. So.
The city of Seattle just charged a, was it developer or bringing down a significant tree? It's, uh.
Well, uh, some of our community is looking at the value of the trees along five twenty-two. And I think the number they came up with is one point two million. So we'll see how that one goes.
There was a council member who asked it quite directly.
It really, it was very impressive. And so I encourage you guys to. You, you probably have seen it, Sarah. Yeah. So it was what Tracy Furtani and I have been talking about. How do you? How do you, you can't just like write a check or throw a little tree that's going to take thirty years to grow to maturity. To provide mitigation. How do you think of that? Those, uh, ecosystem services that the tree provides? So it was pretty exciting to see that.
I agree. Great work.
Uh, so this one is improve health and resilience of local ecosystems to maximize their abilities to remove carbon dioxide from the atmosphere, provide habitat. Regulate the water cycle, buffer the impacts of climate change. Suggestion is to put that environmental quality, which is kind of a given shorelines. Thoughts on that? Thumbs up. We're good. Keep moving. Okay. Increase community resilience, preparedness. This one's kind of incorporated a lot of different areas, uh, capital facilities, utilities, community service and public safety. Put a flag on this one that it is represented in community service and public safety element. So I.
Can I just give you just a brief update on that? We are a member of NAMCO, which is North Emergency Management. Coalition or something like that. Anyway, or collaboration. I don't know. Anyway, there is a NAMCO manager and, uh. Uh, periodically, if you look at city notices, we train and offer emergency preparedness and other kinds of emergency training. So, uh, we're pretty, we're pretty good on this and lucky to be part of the regional coalition working on this with a. Like a permanent staff person in charge of it. Um, so, uh, just wanted to let you know that. From the policy to the action, what kind of like having a state of funding for streets, you know, we have. We have a stable setup for, uh, NAMCO emergency action.
We'll move on to the next one. Uh, TR goal, reduce greenhouse gas emissions from transportation. So this one's talking about electric vehicles and expanding shared. Transportation options. Incorporate that in land use and transportation. Strategy one. So accelerate EV adoption. I guess with. That, I mean, a question I throw out is. This is a pretty broad statement. So is that more pointed towards. Getting stations in the public area? Or I mean, is this trying to say, hey, we need to do this in your own homes and the new housing that we build? That new construction that you put those stations in? Not sure. It's just a broad based statement.
I mean, it might be like Sarah said, there's just our city outreach to. Our city outreach to. Support and encourage or educate. You know, folks on the value of or benefits of, you know, so if you're buying a car, you might. Because of that outreach, you might be more inclined to buy. That's why I kind of interpret it as accelerate electric vehicle adoption could just be effective outreach in our community. And who knows, we might have an EV parade to go with our daughter, right?
It is kind of a chicken or egg sort of situation because my wife has a like a car. And she struggles finding a place to, I mean, other than our home, but it just doesn't charge well enough, right, so.
Right.
Uh, she struggles with finding a place to around here to.
Yeah.
Search cars. So.
Yeah.
Uh, my point is, it's like where. Yeah, we might be encouraging people to purchase electric cars, but if they don't have the place to, right, and charge those cars.
Well, I support having a statement in transportation that is. General like that. Wonder what it looks like, but.
You said not online. You guys are quiet online, are you hanging in there with us? Yeah, okay. Okay, so, uh, second one is reduce community-wide driving, that would be land use, transportation and capital facilities. Yeah, I think maybe we're all in agreement that none of these are. I, I mean, we're not. Greatly opposed to any of these, this is kind of gonna be more once we can see the language, so it's kind of just general and thought, so. I want to respect everyone's time, and then maybe we kind of work through these a little bit quicker unless there's something that somebody's really. You know, aggressively in disagreement with.
Uh, I might say, Ashton, or Chair. Chair Ashton, I feel like it's like when you have a teeth. Uh, I, one of her questions, I keep going back to Christina's question, and it was, you know, basically, do you agree with those assignments? And it doesn't look like we disagree with any of those, so that answers. That question, but um. He did ask, uh. On B, are there any goals or strategies you think should be deferred to? And I'm trying to line up what you were saying, Mark, about. Like, it feels funny to think about putting language in and ripping it out a year later and trying to substitute it, like, process wise, it feels messy. So it almost feels like if we could be appropriately. Specific and vague at the same time, and without having to rip anything out, it's just the climate element would. Be the more meeting. Ease, and so. In that spirit, of having all of those things. Mash up, it feels like strategy two and strategy three on the TR goal would be something that gets. For uh one B, for question one B, that gets uh deferred to part two, and that we don't try to develop a vague statement on that. Because it's already sort of a. Interesting, it's already kind of a vague statement, I don't know what that's gonna look like, and I feel like the Climate Action Committee and the consultants and the staff should have a chance to really work. That out without us. Potentially. Just putting noise in the, in the conflict, does that make sense? So I'm just saying maybe two and three should be deferred to part two instead of being. Just a thought. So to answer your question, I don't have anything that's.
Thank you, Jordan, for.
Yeah.
Right. Anyone else? Are there any of these that you want to talk through or kick around? Marinate on before we come back.
So. The feedback network body tonight, is this gonna be, I'm not quite sure, it's just gonna be implemented by the. So, so that we can actually review the language? It's not.
Not by next week.
So, oh, by the twelfth, no, okay, so.
So what's our goal on the twelve?
To have a uh. Robust group discussion. With Christina. So she can work with. Her staff at consults to reduce that strikeout. That's reflective of your comments. That won't exist by. Climate, it's gonna be March and April. So we're discussing first thing, but I've heard three questions, in, in essence, does this framework work? And then we would do some true things to make sure it captures the whole climate action plan. And then the second, uh, are there any goals or strategies that you would like to defer? How to. Leave general now. Yes, oh, but, um, best treated. Uh, more thoughtful.
So, so, but what's gonna be different about that conversation, given what we're having, I mean, what? Additional information, so we take into account, so that we can have. A deeper conversation. With the consultant, you know what I'm saying, it's like, I'm not sure. Other than going through the documents again, I'm not sure what. What else am I considering to be able to be prepared?
The, the primary thing she calls out is that the climate action plan of the last year has been proceeding. Yeah. Now there's new legislation, yes, they require greenhouse gaps, actual reductions. Goals and statements. Those weren't in place when the climate action plan started or presented. So we needed to determine to what extent that plan addresses those, and then immediately start after that fully addressed. Which to me is the detail, it's, how are you gonna reduce? How do you plan on reduce? Okay, whereas this year and the climate action plan, there's the intent with the directive.
It feels like, David, if I were to guess, that uh next Tuesday's conversation is going to be. Uh, these questions on page eighty, so overall, on page eighty-three or eighty-five. Are all those things acceptable, so, you know, should they move forward and develop a statement, important searches in those sections? Or should they defer any of them? Is how I imagine that conversation's gonna go, but it sounds like they might actually have answers to some of those transportation questions that we. Needed to have a more thorough trip, so I would predict that on the twelfth, we'll have a more thorough conversation on transportation. And less of a conversation about. Uh, climate.
Yeah.
Or if, that's what I'm guessing, and then I, I assume we should be ready to talk about this. Peace, because we still need to answer those questions.
Yeah, with uh Yon here, because there's some of his comments or concerns that he brought up. Yeah, could he associate justice?
Yeah, okay.
So, but, I've been viewing climate and. Um, as an element, the existing element. Is. Optional, but it's there, so we're amending it. The climate element is not optional, and we have more time, so I view it as general versus very specific over to next year. And so the twelve, if we can magically make movement on transportation. The, the. Real big legislative changes over the last year is that then housing. And so I don't want to shortchange transportation. It's a big, it's a big topic, big element, but maybe not as big, uh, to change this climate. Especially because of the grant of the climate action, but, but housing certainly is. So there's need to be recognition that that work was discussed. But if, if we can make movement or direction. On transportation Tuesday night. Comments to Christina. She can go create the strikeout underlines, and we have time to revisit, but we wouldn't be faked. Um, whereas climate, uh, I view as a two month kind of thing, okay, that's good correction.
So in light of that, knowing that we already worked through the transportation, we'll have comments for Christina next week. Is there anything that we'll say you think is worthwhile for us to catch up tonight?
Um, I, this thing in the back of my mind that scared me, the survey. Pretty survey, luckily, the contract with SCJ calls for a survey that's in place. We, we have a, a incentivized gift and so forth, uh, but I'm, uh. I don't know that it is an issue, but I, uh, for my. Sleep at night, just know that we're on track, and I think she's gonna meet with us on Thursday. Which is before next Tuesday, so next Tuesday night, we have an idea of the status of the survey. You know, it's part of our. Public participation plan and outreach. Uh, and confirm some of the work that was done last year for vision. Uh, so it's a good. Opportunity and timing to accomplish that. As opposed to wait until the end, um, there was a suggestion of a public hearing. On the draft document, yeah, quite efficient. In addition to the one that is required at City Council. So right now, we're, we're good, we're on track, heavy work. Um, but I would suggest, let's make sure next week our conversation on survey matures. And then, um. Then we're good to mark.
That meeting is this Thursday.
I think it's before. Yeah, and then, um, then we would actually discuss it as a group.
Sure, right.
As like an update on Tuesday night next week. So I think we're on track, but to answer your question, those are the things, just keep me up.
And I just say, I really appreciate the, how hard this is. Um, and how complex, and I really appreciate the dedication of all of you. Uh, adding the extra meetings, um, I think, uh, that we, we would. I don't know if I can speak for every council, but in general, I believe the council would really appreciate if you could do a public hearing. Uh, so because it, um. It provides. A way for us to know before the document comes to us, kind of where some of the sensitivities are. Um, and will help us, so if that's possible. I think it's very helpful, um, you know, the parks workshop that was held recently on the options for the parks. There was an online version, and then there was an in-person version, so there could maybe. I don't know quite how that, I guess, there's always the opportunity for virtual comment. Uh, but, uh. Uh, uh, so I guess that does, it's not the same kind of thing, but, uh, because there aren't visual pictures. Like there were for the parks option one or two, you know, like, like an eye exam, do you fit one or do you fit two? Um, so, but I, I just want to encourage a, a public hearing on your draft document before you finalize your recommendations to us, if at all possible. In your timeline.
I would, I don't know how everybody else feels about that, but I just. I feel like when we look at through these documents, like I personally, like I look at it from a lens of. Uh, you know, I'm not an expert in any of these transportation or, uh. You know, the SAM and all these things, they're not my expertise, what I'm coming from is more of a layman's, I lived in Lake Forest Park my whole life, and. Um. Just how does this affect the community, how does it affect the families that aren't represented, that can't come to city council meetings? That have young kids, that just don't have the ability to do these types of things, so opening it up for a public. Um, for a public comment, I think is really important, and, um, I don't know if there's ways we can go about. Really advertising this by ways of social media and all the other ways that you can capture. Uh, communities that don't come to these meetings, I think that.
The city can, can help with that, uh, and get the word out. So, yes, I, I think that would be like the, a great introduction speech at the public hearing. We've been trying to represent the community, but we're not experts in any one of these particular fields. So Christina's group was the only group that we interviewed for this work that had a public gallery to play it up. And I think because the survey is kind of the first step, I'm hoping that once we. You know, finalize that, we can move forward with some of these other things, because I don't know about. You know, but I have a really hard time thinking about how to answer these questions, we sort of keep kicking the can down the road a little bit. Because I think some of them are really hard. To answer, because we're in kind of a mushy place, and so. Are we thinking about EQ or land use or transportation when we're figuring out who this hurts who that helps? Um, and I, I think those things are really, it's, it's difficult to answer these questions without the outreach, you know, being done. So, yeah, I'm optimistic that their, the rest of their outreach plan can. We can start working on that once the survey's cut it up. I hope. Because the, um. For the park, I really liked it, there was a QR code. That I was able to click on, and then I was able to share that with a lot of people. That weren't able to come, they were out of town.
It was mid-winter break, too.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, so that was.
The survey lends itself really well to that. If you open it for a period of time, they have a platform, they run it, and a C Y mailer of some sort. With a, a local photo and a QR code does it all. And then outreach and awareness.
And our board members went to some various meetings and also PTA meetings.
Yeah.
And shared the QR code so forth, so they didn't speak for very long, it wasn't like a presentation, it was just. You know, come, take a look and participate in our survey, so.
Uh, I could probably look at the timeline, do you happen to know when that outreach would occur, I mean, it, it doesn't coincide with. You know, civic parks having an Easter egg hunt, uh, and I'm not just speaking to like kids, but, because I have a lot of family that's, you know, seventy, eighty, that lives in this area too, that. Uh, I'm wondering if we can coincide with some, some outreach.
Because I, I'm of the mindset, there's always gonna be a conflict. Everyone is extremely busy. Uh, but some flexibility, and I think this is by the period. That works better than others.
It could be open for ten days or two weeks, something like that, so it, it avoids those kind of conflicts on the survey. Not the public hearing, but.
The search, sorry, and I guess my comment about having. Having it coincide with other events, I mean, what, is there a way that we have representation there at those events, that says, hey? This is a survey that's coming out, do this, uh, if you're interested, and just trying to grasp people that way.
You're not gonna like the idea that came to my head.
Like dress up in something or?
Well, the, the classic style from forty years ago is you give your planners to go stand in front of the grocery store with a flyer.
Yeah.
You'll call people as they do their business. That's old, it doesn't work anymore, so online, um, and there's nine commissioners. There's no, nobody better placed in the community than those nine commissioners to outreach to their groups. Whether it's they have children, are involved in school.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the most effective that I've seen.
Yeah, I, I mean, taking a page out of the. Climate accident, you guys, you turned it into a verb, you tabled at all of these places, and. I'm wondering if that timeline coincides with ways that, I guess I'm volunteering myself to table, uh. Things or be present to try and promote the survey, try and promote the public.
Yeah, SCJ is phenomenal, got it. They do it quite a bit, so take their suggestions. We'll take on the advertising, the outreach, the mailer, the logistics.
Yeah, but Mark, what is the timing of the surveys complete, when it will hit the street? Do you have a sense of that?
But if in the next week or so, we have a, a consensus that. It's, it's good enough to really consider and answer those questions, I think we're on track. I wouldn't want to wait till May-Juneish as the recommendation is forming, because that's more appropriate for a public hearing.
Right.
The public hearing should occur before you fully vet your recommendation, so that. Those windows are fast approaching.
Yeah.
And now it's March, so I, um, I don't want to put a month or a date on it yet, but.
Yeah, but you're saying you prefer not May-June, so, because I was just thinking about the farmers market.
Yeah.
It starts in May, but we do have the green bear coming out the end of March, and so that might be. An opportunity, but I don't know if the survey will be ready by the end of March.
Yeah, the survey's on the.
Oh, is it?
Meeting that we have on the, on Thursday is really just a final, is it?
So the green fairs, I think.
I think it's.
Good opportunity, okay.
Could we place on the agenda for the next meeting, when Christine's here, just to review the overall agenda? Or, or the.
The communication plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a great idea. Yeah, that's, that's a great idea. Yeah, I like them. Great.
We should definitely have a.
I just feel like anywhere we can, if they're.
Cory is organizing that, and so I, or the liaison to that, so I'm sure she can set up the table for you, but. And, you know, it doesn't, you only need that one person there and a flyer with the QR code.
Great. Um, do we, well, finish through the agenda, you go through the agenda? It is. Do we, yeah, okay. Uh, new business, I think, we talked about, we'll add that into the agenda. Review the comp plan, I think that's a fabulous idea. Uh, reports and announcements. Kind of touched on them already.
Staff has none. Staff's busy with known things.
Uh, additional citizen comments?
There was six.
All right, agenda for next meeting. We will be doing, obviously, transportation, climate, we'll also bake in the comp plan uh and community survey. Anything else we want to add to an already robust agenda?
Agenda here, and it says, March four, twenty twenty-four, PC special meeting slideshow.
That's part of the packet material, it's the candidate of the packet.
It says slideshow.
Yeah, it's a paper version of the slideshow that'll need presented at the next meeting, so. The power link, it's in, in order to attach it to the packet, you have to have a line item, so it's kind of this. Yeah, yeah. We'll get it live.
Do you have this line? I have a copy.
No, I do not.
There you go.
It's also online to, if you're to go.
Your turnery.
Yeah, yeah.
I, yeah, I want to keep it. I have an extra.
I have this one. And then I have.
Yeah, everyone.
Great, is there a motion to adjourn if there's something else?
My motion to adjourn.
And second, all favorites.
Hi.
Hi. Yeah. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you all.
She has her.
Thank you.